I think it's close enough.
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
You know?
Here.
Ms. Sykes?
Here.
Mr. McKeever?
Here.
Jane?
Here.
Mary Bunny?
Here. Stand for the best basis.
Next.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Under that.
In the midst of all the injustice and wrong.
Our item number three, agenda approval. I would like to see a new business. Item number eight, move to the end of the meeting or possibly into the executive session if somebody would. Do something as agenda as a motion.
I make a motion to move under K eight, move review and discussion city administrator performance to the end of the meeting after executive session, say law enforcement.
I'll second that motion.
I got a motion by Jackie Sykes, second by Fred Ecker, any discussion? No, all in favor? Aye.
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 Hearing none, motion passes. So that I would approve the agenda, I suppose.
Are the microphones on?
Minus.
Okay, okay, people, I've got a message from here.
Can they hear now? Ask them.
No, they're on.
There you go. Yeah, Rick, come here.
I want an inspection for health department.
Now, that's bullshit.
Okay, consent agenda approval, there is no consent agenda tonight, so that's not necessary. City council minutes approval, you have an enclosure, first one is approval of July fifth, Northland GID meeting minutes. I hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve July fifth, twenty twenty-three, Northland GID meeting minutes.
Got a motion by Nikki Hill.
Second.
Second by Jackie Sykes, approve the Northland GID minutes of July fifth. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Minutes approved. Number three is the approval of July fifteenth, July fifth, city council regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the July fifth, twenty twenty-three, city council regular meeting.
I got a motion by Nikki Hill.
I'll second.
I got a second by Fred Ecker, any discussion? No, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. City attorney report, Catherine Vera has an enclosure, any questions, Catherine? Or just Catherine?
I just want to say thank you for answering my questions that I emailed you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I have a couple additional email updates that I'd sent council, just let me know if there's any questions. I'm sort of thinking that it might be in the best interest of everybody if I kind of carve out an hour every week on my schedule in case anybody has questions or wants to call me or wants any additional updates. It might benefit council to kind of have that availability. If that's something I can look into if you're interested anyway.
Brad?
The snowy, snowy river. What's a snowy river? And who would?
Yeah, Ms. Davis might be able to give a little more background on that. Basically, it's a project that I inherited. There's some friend that we were interested in swapping, wanted an easement for, and we're working with the county to get the proper lot division to finalize that scrap.
Where is that?
If you wanted to give a little more.
So I too inherited this.
I thought it was done.
This involves Ferris family and the water treatment plant.
Oh, it's still that one.
Yeah, I was saying, I thought that we had kind of.
I never heard it called Snowy River before.
That's the name that Ferrises are operating under, Sam Ferris specifically, he owns the property in which we're in.
Yeah, so it was pretty much all teed up, but we're working with the county to process the the lot division that needs to happen to finalize it and been a little slow hearing back from them.
Yeah, I remember that, when we built the treatment plant, the lake, if there's some kind of conflict with Ferris, we build the city lake, right?
Right.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. You have anything there?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Though we'll move on to the administrator, Gay Davis, or you have an enclosure? They have anything to add, Gay, or?
Only thing I'd like to remind everyone of is this Thursday, we do have the enforcement citizens focus groups. There's opportunities for our community to participate in three different sessions. One from eight thirty to nine thirty, one from ten to eleven, and another from five to six. If anyone's interested, we'd encourage you to contact Mr. Colander here, the clerk and recorder's office, or at the city clerk's office and RSVP, it would be helpful to know.
Are there still openings at those meetings?
I'm sorry?
Is there still openings at those meetings?
Yes, ma'am.
And we can observe those meetings?
Yes.
Thank you.
They're here?
They're in city hall.
Any questions of Ms. Davis?
Yeah. Where are we situated on the backflow preventers?
I have approximately seventy-five that have been installed and tested. We're still working with various plumbers and trying to get and property owners and trying to get the balance completed.
So have all the ones that haven't been done been given extensions or?
Yes.
Not working?
Yes. The biggest issue that we have and we're in conversations both with the ORC and we'll have another conversation with the state. Part of our issue is most of the property owners are having problems with getting plumbers to return phone calls and come on site, so. We're trying to work with property owners as best we can.
Could we possibly get a report on that?
Yes.
Okay.
I can email it. Over and above what I just gave you verbally.
Yeah, I'd like to see who's, who's tied, who hasn't, I've been questioned by the public, I'd like to be able to give them the information, you know, and not be in the dark about it. Thank you.
We have a spreadsheet, I need a spreadsheet on it.
Your report that you filled out on the Department of Health, that's kind of like a wish list, list of funding that might be available through them or?
So the eligibility survey that was included for your information is identifying estimated cost to replace or repair all of the ongoing issues that we have with our infrastructure, both raw water, treated water, and then the water treatment or the sewage treatment plants inclusive of stormwater drainage. Obviously, it's an extensive, expensive list, but it's probably one of the most comprehensive that we've put together for the eligibility survey. Intent of that is without the eligibility, without completing the eligibility survey, then we're really not in the running, if you will.
Yeah.
Or eligible for state and federal funding, both with the state revolving loan fund and the new funding coming down from the feds, so. If it's not on the list, they won't fund it, so we put everything on the list.
That's what I figured, and it is that we're not under any mandatory.
Not yet.
Upgrade yet, okay. Anything else? Anybody?
Stephanie?
Go ahead.
No.
Gay, could you give us an update on the IT RFP?
I have not done anything on the IT RFP, had a few other.
I didn't hear the last.
I've had a few other things that I've had to deal with.
Okay, and then is there anything new on the youth camp?
No, ma'am.
And I think last meeting we had asked for Parker excavation contract and invoices totaling sixty-five thousand. Could you maybe try to get that first place?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that's all, thank you.
So I just wanted some clarification on the closing of the park south of Stacy Drive, is that a permanent closure or just while they do this work?
Just while they're doing the work, they anticipate, I believe, it's six weeks.
And are they, who's doing this sewer replacement line, who's, who's, the C dot is doing that?
Yes, ma'am.
And they're paying for all of that?
Ma'am.
Thank you.
And they're paving, repaving correctly?
Yes.
They hit a snag with the railroad, it's going to be delayed a little while.
Surprise.
I signed the paper Friday, but the railroad hasn't signed it yet, so they're to stand still.
They missed UP apparently in the mix.
Well, they changed the size of the pipe from an eighteen to thirty. So dealing with the railroad, that's going to be fun, so. Anything else, Veronica?
Well, I just want to say thank you for addressing Colorado. It looked better than it did, so thank you for getting them out there to cut some of that down and hopefully avoid what's happened in the past with things moving up there, so thank you.
And Ms. Davis, thank you very much for the new chairs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
You can thank Mr. Colander for putting them together.
Thank you, Mr. Colander.
We get chairs.
Those are chairs.
Our new chairs.
New chairs.
Still wrapping on some of them over there. Anything, you seen the other two enclosures, Lake Report, Surso Report, under the administrator, any other question? No?
Thing I would add to the Lake Report is that we have closed Kohler, so we're no longer filling Horseshoe and Martin, and it's not available to backfill city park or city reservoir either, so. We'll see how that goes.
Didn't, they get pretty full though, right?
They have been full.
Yeah, Martin and Horseshoe, yeah. Anything else, Jackie?
Sorry, Ms. Davis, I'm asked quite often, on one of the raw water lines, there are people who have access to that. Some of the property owners along that way, and I understand that we are not using it, is that correct?
So you have two raw water lines, there are people who have access to both water lines, both the cast and the steel. People have access to that water only when it's available from the city. Not committed or responsible for maintaining water in those lines. And the steel line, for those of you who are new and are unfamiliar with our steel line, we refer to it as our sprinkler system. We spent a great amount of time, effort, and money last year in trying to maintain that steel line. And currently, we've been operating with just the cast. We may have to revert to the steel line because our demand is exceeding availability of what's coming down the cast on to maintain the rest.
But we don't have really any plans to be using that on a fixed use basis.
We may be forced to try to increase it, but the issues involved with trying to get it from point A to point B, sometimes don't make it worth it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else of city administrator? Not, we'll move on. City animal control officer, you have an enclosure? Any questions?
Did you miss the building inspector?
Oh, building inspector, I missed one, sorry. We're going to report. Any questions of Ms. Davis? Well, code enforcement report, any questions? Come to the animal control office, you got one?
Yeah, on the code enforcement, do we have any update on the one property that Ms. Vera referenced in her report?
Ms. Vera and I will continue to work on that this week with finalizing forms.
Did you happen to know anything about the meter?
There is no meter.
Thank you.
That's been pulled some time ago.
Thank you.
Anything else? Move on, animal control officer, any questions on that report? Hearing none, we'll move on. Clerk and recorder, you got the court pocket? An agenda? Any questions? I'll do the one. Hearing none, we'll move on. Mr. Moore is missing.
Mr. Moore is unavailable. As his city council report to you, I have some additional information that I can provide, or if you have questions, I'll try to adjust them.
So if I remember correctly, and I may have misunderstood, it had been asked a few times if we were going to need an extension. And I think it was reported that we weren't going to need an extension. And now I see that we did get an extension, so was there something that transpired or something happened that we didn't anticipate to create that request?
So I don't know the whole logistical thing, but I think part of it is both the CPA, they were very pleased with the information that Mr. Moore was able to put together. He did transmit all of the necessary documents to the auditors before he left last, at the end of last week. I think it's just a question of their, everyone's inability to complete everything by the end of the month. So I know that Ms. Vera has also been included in this loop as she has to prepare a document on the verbiage or the actual application or preparation of the audit, so there, I think between the three players, both Mr. Moore, the CPA, and the auditor, it's just a question of timing.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
So on the aging report, I have some, some questions about the way I see it, there is about eighty-six thousand dollars that it indicates the last payments were on twelve twenty-seventh of twenty-one. But there is no final bill date on there. So I'm not sure if, and I asked, I believe I asked this question before. Have they been closed out, I'm sure that they've been billed, do they have a deposit still, and have we done anything to try to collect those? And if you would tell me what the process is?
So I believe that particular entity in question has been contacted, they are out of state. The property is for sale, they are aware almost to the penny of what they owe. Because of the nature of that most of it is gas, it's not a leanable utility. So we are, but we have been in communication and confirmed what, what is owed versus what they think they owe, which is very much the same.
So if I understand what you just said, gas, we as an entity can do nothing about, we cannot lean the property?
That is, that is my understanding that water sewer is, you can lean property on water sewer, but you cannot on gas.
But can you not just send it to like a collection agency?
There is that, yes.
I mean.
Yet to identify a collection agency per se, but that has been part of the discussion.
I mean, does anybody work these aging reports? I mean, are we just, well, here's aging report, it just keeps coming up every month, like it's a lot of money that's out there. And my understanding, the way it was explained to us, is that once it, the bill goes out, it hits our accounts receivable, like it is income, revenue that comes in, that was how it was explained to us, once the bills go out, it's revenue. So I don't understand how if these are years old and if you send a charge and someone doesn't pay it, it's not a revenue. So I don't, I still can't wrap my head around that.
I'm not.
How it was explained.
I don't know how they classify it from the book standpoint, but I think you'll again notice that I don't want to keep using the word inherited, but a lot of these situations and a lot of this particular aged billing is something that has been ongoing for a number of years. It's going to take some time to get it off the books. And we have, Mr. Moore and I both had conversations about identifying a collection agency, but haven't pinpointed.
Standard accounting practices, if you get to the point where you're not going to collect it, it always has to show as a revenue. And then you.
And then you write it off.
There's a bad debt, that's the only thing.
I, and I know that some of that has occurred in the past, that would be a discussion that would have to happen with Mr. Moore in lieu of the audit and the CPA. There has been some that has occurred that way.
So in reading the ordinance regarding this or this process, I understand that we have the ability to raise our deposits, and we can raise it up to two months, sixty days worth of billing. Have we, have we done that on any of these, we have some that have fairly sizable, have we ever increased the the deposit requirement that you're aware of?
I don't know, but that may be something that has to come to council for approval.
Would you, I would like to consider that and, and maybe establish a process.
So what are the deposits now?
Hundred and twenty-five, definitely is that correct?
Residential twenty-five and a half per, per service.
Fifty for commercial?
For commercial.
And do you remember how long ago it was that they raised that, because they did raise it? Because we had to come in and cure our deposit when we took possession of our house. So I know it's been within the last ten years. Yeah, it was raised at one point, I remember that, and it was within that ten-year period, I remember.
But we have the flexibility, if, if, I mean, I don't know how somebody would get eighty thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars. Thirty thousand dollars on one, one account is thirty thousand dollars, I'm not quite sure, another's eighteen, another's twenty-two, I'm not sure how they would get that high. And if that was a consistent billing, then maybe, and they're that high, we should consider the deposit, just something to look into.
I'm just not sure what that's going to do, I mean, if we're going to raise deposits on on all customers, you know, and you only have a handful of these high dollar ones.
No, it's individual. Veronica, it's an individual ability to charge them on an individual account.
You asking for larger deposits by new customers, or you're asking for?
That's what I, yeah.
I don't believe that you should acknowledge.
Pardon me?
I can't, what?
Well, I agree with Ms.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Are you suggesting, are you suggesting that we, and that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around, are you suggesting that we raise deposits for everybody? Or just go after these specific accounts?
Okay, so if somebody, obviously, if we look through this report, right? There are some people in here that have very high monthly bills and they're behind. So one of the things that could be done when we are reviewing them, because if they're shut off, right, for non-payment, then they have to become current, one of the things that we could address with them, if they have a history of being behind and they have a large amount, increasing their deposit, so it would turn it back on, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, so it would provide more security for us.
I believe that's illegal, which is already entered into.
I just don't, I mean, okay, that just sounds like such a process, like who's going to do that?
Yeah, I don't know, we can talk about it, not now.
So I, I will have a convert, I'm, I'm sorry, can't have audience participation at this point. Ms. Vera and I will have a conversation about what that might look like, obviously, it would require establishing some process stringent criteria so that it doesn't become arbitrary and.
Well, it sounds like this might be a carry forward from when you let people go months and months and months, and if you just stop that, it's going to lower those numbers, I would think.
And COVID played a piece.
COVID, COVID is.
And our billing issues played a piece in this, so, I mean, I think some of those things just compounded it, but at the same time, it, you owe this money, like.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know.
Let's look at that in the future to try to prevent those accounts from getting so high before we do something.
Well, and I think the other thing I would like to know on this report is who's residential and who's business? My guess are these high dollar ones are all businesses, but I don't know that for sure. So I don't know if there's any way that that can be identified if it's residential or commercial.
We can pass that question on to Jim.
Yeah, and that was, that's why I mentioned that to Ms. Davis.
Any other question of the accountant? Hearing none, we'll move on, city treasurer.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
What about Cassell, has that been set yet?
Interestingly enough, we have been unable to pinpoint Cassell on a date in September, but we haven't received anything contrary to what we presented to them, so.
So have they started doing the review of accounts that we had proved for them to do as well?
That I don't know, I I don't know, I didn't ask that question to Mr. Moore before he left.
So I would like to follow up to that question, because I think if that piece gets done, that's at least a start, and then eventually, what dates? You know, that was one of the things that the last council got pushed back for not approving it so fast, this council got it done and we're still in limbo, so. I just would like more follow up on that. Thank you.
No more questions? Stephanie, city treasurer reports.
Wolfenberg has approved thirty, twenty-three as a total cash balance, that's a million thirty-two thousand seventy-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. It's a year operating forty-five thousand, six million two hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety, come down to five million six hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, we both do this. And that regularly, and they're all for operational use.
Any question? question? Amen. You get a motion to approve?
No.
That is a comment. Stephanie, first.
I only have three minutes to decide some of those. I applied for a sewer and water tap back in the August of twenty-two. And basically, there was nothing done for it. It was sat on by Ms. Davis for two months. And then I got in touch with Monte and he went up to my, we looked at back alley and to see what, what could be done. He ended up by water line, but the sewer line, he couldn't find. Pinion. And so we sat there for another month and finally got up there and he dropped the water line in. He couldn't get it down deep enough. It froze up twice. Once I saved it one time. Then finally coming around in April, there was supposed to be a fifty-fifty split negotiated for my sewer line. It was ran down my throat. These are the options. The options was, was to go into the one-on-four welton street. They could not do because they were, nothing but a sheet of rock and they, and I continuously gave this information to Ms. Davis. And then there would also the other option of twenty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars presented by Parker excavation, which was obscene. And during this entire time, I am sitting on big dollars. It's costing me thousands of dollars. Mortgage rates were down. It, when this all started nine months earlier, they were down to three point two percent, two point, two point two-two percent on a fixed. Now they're at seven point one-two percent. The applications have fallen forty percent. I lost my liability insurance on my house because I couldn't get a CO. I couldn't get a CO because I couldn't get a sewer line in and my plumbing had to be tapped. Get my plumbing. And so this all continued to culminate and it, it is obscene. And so I am looking to see that fifty-fifty negotiation on this six thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars plus the materials. I feel that, that more than what could be done for you. And whoever this character is that put in this information on the that, that's an old line. It's got this, that, the other. It's a brand new line from my house down into the alley and straight down the pinion. And I'm the only one on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate, can you respond to this at all? I wasn't here when this all happened. Did you negotiate a?
I will provide your memos that were provided to Mr. Bonacelli.
I didn't hear you.
There are memos associated with this. I can forward to the new members that seated members are aware of this.
Yeah. You get a copy of this one? Did she?
We did.
I'll get you a copy of his too then. You got one.
Thank you. Can I ask Mr. Bonacelli a couple of questions just for clarification? So so when the options were given to you, you said three options and I see you said I took option three. What were the other two options?
What was the dump, the water or the sewer and to one-on-four welton? And I had explained explicitly that that could not be done because it's a shelf of rock.
Okay.
They could not even dig the water line down deep enough onto that street.
Okay.
And the other one was Parker.
So option two was Parker, the city paying fifty percent.
One was to get my own contractor, which I had requested continuously throughout this nine month period. I'll get my own, I'll get my own contractor. I'll do it myself. I'll and no, that's not an option.
But in option three, contracting your own contractor, was there an agreement that the city would pay half of that? Or was it only with Parker that the city?
Parker. And that was not part of the, in the minutes that said a fifty-fifty negotiation with negotiating with me.
Okay.
And that was not, it was here. This has got to be done by Monday. If not, it all went away.
Okay. And what, what is your ask? You're asking for half of the sixty-eight hundred?
Plus the materials. So that takes it up to another twenty, some hundred dollars, which was an add-on. And so the total thing that I was trying to be paid with sixteen, sixteen thousand two hundred and some dollars.
So.
Part of it. And I, I mean, I could have gotten some coal miners down there and dug it cheaper than that.
So sixteen is half of the twenty-nine thousand. Is that where you're getting that number?
That was the original. Yeah.
All right. I just needed those clarifying numbers. Have you provided that material list and costs to the city?
He provided the materials.
Oh, the city.
Material and I sent the bill. I provided the bill.
Okay. So the city paid for the materials already?
He provided, we delivered the materials.
Okay.
For the alley job. It's the homeowner's responsibility to go from the house to the tap in the alley.
Okay. So you're asking for materials for that piece that you would be responsible for?
I'm not asking for material. They were provided. I'm asking for the half. If you want to throw in the materials of twenty.
But I'm saying if the city provided the materials for their part, they were responsible for.
Got them for Parker. The only thing is they gave me an upcharge of twenty-some hundred dollars. If Parker took, so it was going to end up costing me sixteen thousand dollars and some odd cents if I'd have gone through Parker.
But technically, the homeowner is responsible for those materials from right? Gay, is that what you said? Ms. Davis?
The, I, I'm.
The materials other than the city provided are the responsibility of the homeowner.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
I asked a question. On a salary, you're asking for like thirty-four hundred some bucks. Yes, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm a little familiar with this. When Monty was here, his sewer line was stuck to the alley already. Yes. A portion of the sewer was in place. He's requesting the work that was done in the alley on the city property.
Or welton down to the drop in. And actually, that really is the city's responsibility, but this, like I said, it just kept on getting worse and worse. After nine months. And nobody seemed to care. I mean, I'm sitting here on over a quarter million dollar house. And I can't get anything done. I can't get the sewer line in so that I can get my file inspection on my plumbing.
Is it done now?
It's done, yes. And I got CO. I finally got my insurance re, rinsed, established. That was a little bit shaky for about two months.
Would you be willing to meet with us? We'll do this kind of in.
I'm sorry, what?
Can you meet with us sometime and we'll figure this out?
Yes, I'm meeting here. Great. I appreciate it.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can you please find your, your subject?
Yeah. Aaron Harper, I'm the co-owner of Witz. There were some questions at a prior meeting and unfortunately I wasn't able to be here. The, the date kind of threw me off. You leave the date because of the Fourth of July holiday.
Did you show up on the fourth?
Say again?
Did you show up on the fourth?
Uh, no, actually I didn't. But it completely threw me off and I apologize for that. There were some questions, I believe. He has some questions besides regarding the seven day cancellation clause.
I had that question.
You had that question. Okay. And if, if you want to know thirty, not a problem.
My question was Ashcatac.
Right.
I thought we had a thirty day cancellation. Not. And I was told they were out of business, so they couldn't give us that.
Ashcatac, things, things have changed a little bit. They're not out of business. They've changed their scope.
That's not what we were told.
Yeah, I know. It's one. Yeah, it was exactly.
So the question wasn't to you. It was about Ashcatac.
Okay. Yeah. And if, if you want me to alter the the contract.
It's out to bid. So I mean, until we have bids from IT companies, I don't want to talk about contracts.
No, no. And, and it's, it's more on my, on my contract. Would you guys feel more comfortable with a thirty day?
I don't want to discuss any contracts until it goes out to bid.
So at that point in time, what you do, I do a, a better contract. More in line with the, with the, the concerns you have. And I'm also waiving the about the, the, to adjust things from Ashcatac to Witz because, because of a security concern that's already been addressed. So that's what I got.
So right now you have a, was it a two month temporary contract?
That's correct.
Until it goes to bed.
And basically I'm filling in on the Ashcatac contract, which is kind of weird, but nonetheless, that's staying here.
I, my understanding is it was a temporary contract with you.
For it well.
For July and August, right? It wasn't really fulfilling Ashcatac's, like their contract terms, they terminated it.
Based upon the terms of the Ashcatac contract.
Exactly, precisely. So.
And then you're aware you have to bid after the end of that stack. Okay.
Yeah, okay. Probably got a bid earlier than that.
I would hope it's open for bid already. So.
Yep. All right. Is there any, any questions I can answer for you guys?
Thank you. Next, Stephanie.
Brian LaLander. He has general comments.
I am Brian LaLander, R I A N L A L A N E R. Um, I prepared a few page thing. I was going to talk about the other email. Have a coffee, but um, after sitting here for a minute, I can't go through this in ten minutes and there's a couple of other things I'm concerned about. Um, I just got done watching the July chance work session. And I, I want to clean a couple of things up. Mayor, Mayor Vazani complained that you haven't had a water and sewer supervisor, street supervisor, or building inspector in over six months. The fact is that the city has not been operating with any of these qualified people since before I was mayor and continues after I was mayor. This is not a six month problem. This is a six year problem.
This needs to be fixed.
And my question is, does this council want things to run and function professionally? Equitably? Or do we want to go back to what we had where rules were applied arbitrarily, if at all? Special interests got special deals. Do we want to go to that or are we going to follow the rule? Can't follow the rules without professionals that understand that. Now the thing that concerned me today. When I was mayor, and you remember this, Mr. Martinez, before I was mayor, James Toth had to have an evaluation. And we were instructed that we could not do personnel evaluations in executive session. And this was confirmed again when I was mayor unless that person, person agreed. You must ask this Davis. Now I don't know if she did or not. Does Miss Davis wish to have that in executive session? Because if she wants it in public, the sunshine law and the case law is very clear about that. I think this Laurel support that. Final thoughts. Everything smells like we're trying to go back to the good old boys. Here and there's a little manipulation going on recently, not you Veronica, but we have this problem with the mercantile that was a problem created by unqualified staff and administration. You have a maker space that's supposed to be teaching entrepreneurs how to do good business. But what do they teach them? Hook your water into your neighbors. You don't have to have a water tap. You don't have to have sign permits. You can occupy the business and running it before you get a certificate of occupancy. Do you have a handicap bathroom? They don't have to follow all those rules. Equity. You have to do this without bathrooms.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian.
Let you see what we put in for your subject. Good evening, Carmen Laura, C A R M E N. First of all, I would like to thank council member Mick V. Hill for giving opinion and Anderson's attention and getting that fixed. Thank you. And to the employees who did the job. Like to thank Aubrey Lytton for his friends on Main Street. You look beautiful and admirable. But maybe next time they could bring it to council for permission. Thank you for Colorado having a week cleanup and a couple of patches. So these are kind of taking place. So that's good. That's good. Also next I would like to talk about seems like almost every time you get a report, it's different.
I agree.
The service order report. It took off the address and that's probably okay. But take for example, the block sewer line. That's the first thing on the report normally. It was combined, the pending, the canceled and the complete was all on the same page. Now you have a pending report, you have a canceled report and you have a completed report. So you have to look at all three reports to get an idea of how many block sewers were fixed. So I'd like to see that go back to you know, all on the one page. So if council approves, I'd like to see that happen again. I don't know if you've noticed that, but you're getting three different reports now instead of the one. Also, since you have a block sewer line on the right side, it shows per line item, boxer, boxer, boxer. Maybe you could take that off since you have your little title there. Say paper and ink printed portrait. Just another suggestion. There are many duplicates on there. And I don't know if citizens are getting charged, double charged, triple charged. But they're kind of tired. The citizens are really tired about all of these bad bills. They don't want to come anymore. They just want to pay the dumb thing and get it over with. And that's not doing justice to our citizens. So moving on to the revenue expense comparison report. These reports must be reconciled each month. Policy, state statute. It's got to happen. And so if you reconcile the report on a regular basis, then you don't need so much time with the pre-auditor. It should be prepared. Again, it's going to be August. Mr. Moore hasn't reconciled anything yet. And he should be reconciling all the time. So he uses that as an excuse. He's doing the pre-audit, can't do it. He's got to follow it. A policy just like everybody else. So the only thing I have left to study is now closing with those reports.
Thank you.
Next, Stephanie.
You just like comments, right?
They're in person tonight.
Yeah, man. Yeah. Pretty hot out there the last couple of days. So I've been working here for about seven years or so and it's been a frigging mess. The whole place has been. If you fire these people, who are you going to get? One of your buddies? You know, I've got a commercial place that I want to put a a residential place in. Can I use my tap? Just tap off of it and go to it?
I hope not.
We have law, we have regulations, right? So before you start trying to fire people that are trying to help, this is the best person I've seen here since I've been here. Jim too. I asked for the Northland numbers for the last three years, two and a half years, me and Monica. We were two weeks per year. Jim got the numbers together in a year and a half. You all have problems here. You all have problems here, but if you don't start putting your personal problems aside. You're going to end up luck with this little town, and I've told everybody this, I love this place, but it's a crackly little town. That people go through to get to their destination. I travel all across the United States and have my whole life. I've seen towns like this turn around, and we stop there and have dinner or lunch. But not like this. Who are you going to get the last administrator and administrator before that? Another thing, do something constructive. Montre has ninety nine taps. And water that you've been holding back. For the last four years or more, five, six years. The contract's up. Do something constructive and get rid of that, please. Vote for tonight, let Miss Davis get rid of the contract. And move forward with constructive, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stefan.
Next.
Anyone else in house? I don't see anyone on Zoom.
Uh, presentations none tonight, the hearings none tonight. Back to, back to citizens' comments. That's okay.
Can you hear me? I, I, I just want to say one thing. When you have nothing to hide. You hide nothing. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. What else? No presentations, no public hearings, no unfinished business. Uh, can we a- address an unfinished business topic even though there's nothing on the agenda?
Sorry, can we address what?
Grab us to bring up an unfinished business item that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I missed it.
Can you do it during comments?
Comments, yeah, can you do it under? That'd be best, thank you.
Oh, I, I, I sent a email to.
Do we need to wait till we get the comments?
Yeah, at the end of the meeting.
Under comments, when each of us have the opportunity to comment. So we're going to do your new business first.
All right, no unfinished business. New business, number four, authorization to submit E I A F tier two grant for meter replacement program.
I'll make a motion to authorize to submit the E I F tier two. Grant for meter replacement program.
I got a motion from Don Martinez. Right here, second.
Second.
Second by Jackie Sykes. Any discussion?
So it's a one to one match.
So I, if you. Would indulge me a moment, I'll kind of fill in the blanks here a little bit.
So before you do that, quick question. We've spent a lot of money on replacing meters over the last two years. And I feel like, what did we throw that money away for if we're going to go a whole new direction?
You've spent a lot of money on ERTs that doesn't necessarily resolve all of your issues. With meters. This particular program. If you're going to resolve continued problems with billing. If you're going to, um, work towards. Some satisfaction and some credibility with our consumers. Then you have to have the tools to be able to do that with. And one of the tools that, in particular with. Um, it, the meter program is, is sort of across the board, multiple. Opportunities for us. It affords us the opportunity to introduce meters that will allow our consumers. To monitor their meters on a minute by minute, day by day process. Electronically, they have, uh, they can access a website. It's there, they can see their meter, it gives them the information, the data, and tells them if they have a potential leak based upon their usage. That's, that's one huge benefit. The second benefit is that. In the, in the process of trying to complete a. Um, rate study, one of the things that we have identified. Is that the amount of water that we treat and have available for sale, per se. Uh, is only being billed. At substantial, uh. Rate less than that. We average anywhere from thirty eight to fifty one percent. Loss between what we treat and what we are paid for. The meters won't necessarily, um, identify what all of that loss is. But it will be a substantial step in the right direction of being able to. To bill for the water that's being used. The third aspect of this particular meter program. Is that, as we've talked about it extensively, we have a lead copper, um. Federal mandate that goes into effect October of twenty twenty four. We have to, as a city, identify our service lines. From both, uh, the main to the meter and from the meter to the house. And when I say identify that, we have to identify what the, uh, context of that is. So is it copper, is it galvanized? Is it lead? Uh, is it PEX PVC, CPVC, whatever that is? If it is lead, it has to be replaced by state and federal requirements. But we have to identify them first and foremost, so that has, uh, October twenty twenty four timeline attached to it. With the meter process, we have the opportunity to individually identify what that looks like. And that's. One step, that is the step requirement for the lead and copper, uh, certification. This particular application. Would not, um. It could, it would be funded, potentially funded in November. It would not be contracted until February. So it actually. Pushes to a twenty twenty four budget year. So if this were something that you wanted to proceed with. Then it would be identified in the capital improvement program for twenty twenty four. So it wouldn't affect this year, but it would, um. Come into play then the next year. As a match.
You have to use it all one year or no?
How, how long?
It's, it's a two to three year. Uh, DOL conventionally has two to three year contracts.
And the five hundred fifty thousand is total, or just our half?
Our half.
That's our half?
Yep.
It's one to one matching, so they five fifty were five fifty.
Fifty fifty match.
So you're asking for a million one?
Yes. That, this is the meters that completes the lead and copper that includes installation, uh. By a contract service versus. Tying up all our crews to accomplish this.
Our financial reports don't show the fund balance like in the water fund, you know what it is?
I do not know off the top of my head, no.
So. Could you provide us with? I, I don't know when you started replacing, I believe, what, the last three years? Could you provide us with some information of what has been replaced, what we can use, or what will just be? Disposed of, I don't know.
So we currently have, um, just. Under eighteen hundred meters. They vary in size anywhere from, uh, eight inch down to, uh, half to three quarter. Currently, we have, um. Four hundred and twenty four meters that are fourteen plus years old.
Four hundred, I'm sorry.
Four hundred and twenty four, we've identified as being over, uh, fourteen years old.
Fourteen plus, okay.
The reason that we say that they're fourteen to fifteen years old is because the Casell system was introduced in two thousand eight. So these meters were identified at that point, they.
They, they could be a lot older.
They could be a lot older than that.
But all the remain, from the eighteen hundred, the difference between the eighteen hundred and the four twenty four have all been replaced within that fourteen years.
Within the la- correct.
But can you, have you started replacing? Haven't you been replacing in the last few years?
Well, it's.
Couple of years?
Yeah, we have.
We've, out of necessity, they had to re- they've been replacing some, yes.
Okay, do you have that figure?
So I have, uh, seventy eight that are, uh, about a year old. I have in the course of five years. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, about five fifty that have been replaced in the last five years, so.
What about from five to fourteen?
A, a third. Little over a third within the last five years.
Now that's meters.
Meters.
Now what, the, the, what were you saying about the ERTs?
So the ERTs. We've spent a ton of money on ERTs, um, the average cost is about a hundred and thirty bucks a piece. That's the first line of defense. If we have a problem with meter reads, that's usually what gets replaced first. And then if the issue persists, then we go back to the meter. So I don't have a total on.
So this is replacing all water meters, the eighteen hundred water meters?
Yep.
So. What about, I mean, if there's still issues with the ERTs, I mean, what did we solve by just replacing the meters?
It's, it's a comprehensive system. It eliminates, what we're going with is a cellular read. Versus, uh, a, a drive by aspect, uh, a radio read.
So the ERTs don't apply anymore?
It's a, it's a different, uh, mechanism than what we know of as ERTs. Correct.
So is this. Whatever you want to call it, in this new meter, is it built into that meter?
Some of them are built in, some of them are similar to this, they're, um, replaceable, if you will. So it's an antenna system versus. Uh, that hurts a little electronic box kind of thing, so a similar type deal, but it's a different process.
And the, this five fifty plus the five fifty match includes meters, installation, everything. Removing the other ones, disposing of the other ones, all of that, it will come. And how long do you anticipate this will take with that October twenty twenty four deadline looming?
I anticipate it's going to take a year and a half to replace meters. With the October twenty twenty four deadline, what we have to be able to do is go through and.
That's just identify.
At least identify the, the lines. So.
And so who's going to do that?
Um, so as the company progresses in the installation, they'll GPS and they'll complete a report with that. As, as time allows, we. Will try to do some of that ourselves, simply because. The homeowner's side. Is not necessarily going to be able to be identified. The state's requiring that you, um, be able to identify eighteen inches on either side of the meters. For residential meters, if you looked at your meter can outside your house, it's only about this big, maybe twelve, eighteen inches in diameter. You're not going to be able to tell. Uh, eighteen to eighteen, so what we're going to have to do is literally survey property owners. To identify, unless we have knowledge of a recent change. They'll have to, uh, survey individual property owners to identify what's in their house.
And are those parts included in this grant?
Yes. That's part of the survey process. Identification process.
So what I'm hearing you say is that we've replaced a lot of ERTs. They're approximately a hundred and thirty dollars each, and they will be. Disposed of. Is that what you're saying?
At, at some point in time, they are disposable, they're battery operated.
A ten, didn't they only have like a ten year lifespan?
Yeah.
And we're pushing those limits, I think. Oh, you're pushing limits, I thought that's what you've been replacing recently.
I, a lot of the ERTs they have replaced, that was. So the ERT program was similar to. A lot of things. They went in and introduced, uh, the radio read. All in the course of. Here, I'm guessing. So, you know, with that, what happens is. Everything has the same shelf life. And that was part of the issue with the collapse of the. Billing system.
So. You need this grant to fulfill the October twenty fourth identification?
Part of.
Part of it?
Part of it. Part of it is to try to rebuild, uh, a rapport with our community. Give them the tools and the mechanisms to be able to. Truly, uh, identify what they're using from a water set standpoint. And then to get. Accurate billing and get a return on our investment.
So of these eighteen hundred meters, eighteen hundred customers, how many of them have? Meters that are inaccurate or that are not right?
I, I don't have an actual report on that. I can tell you that. There are fifteen hundred of them that are, um. What you would consider smaller residential or smaller commercial. Uh, half to three quarter inch in size. So the balance of them are commercial larger sizes.
Meters. Accuracy goes down after day one. Or, you know, it wears, I mean.
Like driving your car off the lawn.
I mean, they. When you put it in, it's, it's accurate, and then it slowly, hopefully slowly degrades.
And the life expectancy of them decreases. So what is the life, what is the life expectancy of these new meters?
Most of them are twenty years.
It goes way fast.
I don't know, but that's anymore, but. Better than ten. It's better than the ten.
On, and everyone that's out there is degrading every minute. I mean, they're wearing out right now, you know, so. That's, that's one of the problems the city has always had, is no plan to.
Replace.
To replace, this, all this stuff should have been on a.
Depression schedule. What are the, I guess. To replace them all at once, then in ten, twenty years, if we're replacing them all at once again, I mean, is there a way to? Figure, I mean, I don't know. Or put them all in and hope for the best.
There are, the interesting thing is, as, um, as opportunity presents themselves. And we're not the only community that is faced with the same situations. Um, there are several companies out there. That actually have a meter maintenance program. Where, uh, you can contract with them, where they'll come in. Maintain your meters, they'll maintain whatever, uh, operational. Uh. Billing system, it, access points that you need. Um, so you know, there's some opportunities for the city down the road. If they wanted to. Been like this. Uh, you could certainly, there'll be more companies like that. Backfilling the gap that all of our municipalities have, obtaining personnel and. Being able to accomplish tasks on their own.
So if we go through with this, are you going to get bids, or do you already have somebody identified or a company already?
No, it, uh, because it's DOLA funding, uh, state and federal funding requires an RFP process. I have, uh, begun an RFP process, I started that about a month ago. Uh, it's nowhere near complete, but. There's six months to be able to process that.
So you said you started the process, you've already put it out for bid, or you?
No, no, no.
And on the.
Working on the RFP.
I have the grant, yeah.
Right, that's why I asked. And what are our odds of getting those scrap? I mean, are they putting any, like, for rural areas, for, like, the condition or infrastructures? And I mean, does that, any of those things give us favorable?
So I think the conversation that I've had with Ms. Marshall in regards to this. Um. After explaining the components. That, and what we're trying to accomplish with this, that it meets multiple fronts. I think that puts us, uh, in a much better light than if we just went in and said, we want to replace a meter program.
Yeah, this is a question. Are y'all ponder that? Hi, Ryan, East Colorado.
Hi, Ryan, East Colorado, Rhino Plumbing. Uh, and just doing some of the short math, I'd like to, um, just encourage you all to just vote on this and say yes. Um, we're looking at these numbers that we just, we're just giving off the top. We've got eighteen hundred meters, five of them have just been replaced. We're talking about the meter, the diaphragms and the spinning parts of where the water goes through. The ERT being a transmitter, just a simple little electronic box on the top, right? So we're talking about the meters themselves, the hardened brass diaphragm mechanical element, okay? At, at this one point five or one point one million dollars, that allows us one thousand replacements at eleven hundred dollars a piece. The meters themselves are four or five hundred dollars. It's allowing you another five or six hundred dollars for the labor to go turn them all out. Along, on top of that, the rest of the money for the survey and et cetera, administration costs of, of making this program grow through. If you're sitting here and trying to decide whether or not to apply for a grant, which is matching funds. Put this in your head that you're getting asked this community to pay five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To get five hundred of the one thousand meters done. If you get the money from DOLA, then we get one thousand meters done and we get two-thirds of the way into the city's needs. I don't see where there's any kind of. Logical process to not just say, thank you, DOLA, here's our application. If they deny us, great, but I think that all you have to do up there is to say yes. Please submit the grant, let's see where we go.
Would you say you was with?
My name is Ryan, East Colorado Rhino Plumbing. I've seen fifty or sixty meters in this town that cannot even be turned off. They're ancient. Um, but, but this is that there's only, I believe we just heard this number seventy-eight of them. I'm sorry, that was the wrong one. Four hundred and twenty-four of them, over fourteen years old, I've probably seen at least fifty of those. Majority of town has half-inch meters, half-inch waterline isn't even a legal waterline in the state of Colorado. So please move forward with this. If we're losing thirty-eight to fifty percent of the water, why treat the water? Why don't you just dump it back in the ditch if we're gonna lose it?
That's what.
But there's a lot of, other than just the meters, Mr. Guy.
I'm sorry, I, I.
So let's don't just say that it's.
You have a lot of.
But I'm just trying to agree with Ms. Davis that yes, the meters in the town are something that can be addressed.
That's right.
And if DOLA has a meter replacement program, we should be jumping at the opportunity to take that money from the rest of the state. You don't have it, they can give it to us. I would just encourage you to please vote on that and move that grant forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So kind of after that discussion, I just want to be clear. I thought you said this five fifty with the five fifty match would cover all eighteen hundred meters.
That's what we're anticipating. We haven't, we haven't put it out to bid.
We don't know.
He's done the math, but.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, that's for eighteen hundred meters, that's six hundred and eleven dollars per meter.
I have.
If the cost of a meter is five hundred dollars, you're not gonna get it done with all of that.
I have multiple because of the bulk quantity that would be proposed here.
I mean, I would just.
Better pricing. So I have anywhere from four fifty to six hundred, including installation. Sure.
Okay, I'm just saying, I mean, I, if, you know, moving forward with this, I want them all done. Like, I, I don't want to go back into that piece and then partying again.
I, I don't think it serves us to do a few and not all of them.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. I want to make sure we're asking for enough money and we're putting enough money that we get the job done. So that is kind of my only hesitation is five fifty, the magic number to ask for grant and to match.
I, I'm pretty confident in that at this juncture.
What's your name, Ryan?
Pardon me?
What was your name again?
Ryan, G, I, E, S.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If, do these meters wear per gallon the same or per year?
No, and, and.
Ever cal- calibrated one, like after ten years and see how much the loss is?
I have never, no sir.
Oh, couldn't we do that?
I mean, it would be a waste of city resources to calibrate. Their manufacturers can do that, the suppliers. If I was to pull a meter, I would send it back and get a new. I wouldn't waste my time to do that. I don't believe there's anybody in the city staff that would be qualified to calibrate water.
Well, and a lot of them.
Water hose, shut everything off and fill a five gallon bucket and see if it measures five gallon.
But you can prove that it's right or wrong, but yeah, fix it.
I'm not, that's what I'm talking about. See how much loss there was. It, in other words, don't replace something before it's time. If they're still pretty well working.
Well, I would think, I mean, of the last five years, you've replaced five hundred and fifty of them. Those are brand new technologies with lead-free brass. They're not anything that you would have to change. Let free, we've been making lead-free brass now for about ten or fifteen years. So I would say anything that's in that last five or six years is probably okay. But the amount of lead lines, skeletonized water lines, half-inch copper lines in this town is, that's the dominant source in most of the residences here.
So the most, you obviously work in this business. Do most cities replace their water meters every twenty years?
But most cities don't own their water meters. Denver Water is the largest water purveyor and that's a private entity. So I don't work for Denver Water. I've worked on any of their water treatment banks.
All right, that's good.
Spend billions of dollars a year.
Any other comments? Nobody?
What was the mo- do we have a motion on table?
Yeah, I don't think.
That we did.
Yeah.
That's Donald did and I seconded.
Don Martinez and Jackie Sykes seconded.
Can prove it as is, the five fifty? Go.
We'll call.
Just these?
Yes.
Yes.
The Martinez?
Yes.
Name is on?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Record?
Yes.
Yes. Please keep us updated as this goes along and if anything changes.
Uh, October, this timing is essential. This is due first of October. You will get a final version of it.
And know the answer when?
On November. This will probably require a committee presentation because it's a tier two based upon the dollar amount.
Uh, the second item, number five, under new business, discussion of possible direction on downtown trees. Has everybody read that enclosure? I read it as it pretty well says. The landowner. On the sidewalk can do what they want to this thing because this downtown improvement district's gone. Yeah, is that how you read it?
So the, the concern is. And, and I've communicated this with Ms. Vera as well, so we'll need a little bit of her take on this. The city dissolved the general improvement district because of some inconsistencies in its formation. This particular resolution identified that the trees were an asset in a sense of the GID. So when the GID was null and void, then the question becomes, do those assets then transfer to the city? And if that's the case, then, um. There's some question as to whether, um, the one statement that the GID can't afford to maintain them. Uh, comes into play. So, you know, there's multiple issues, uh, we've. For those of you who've been in attendance at URA meetings, multiple conversations about what that looks like with sidewalks. Et cetera, et cetera, so. I'll push this to Ms. Vera.
So I mean, I think it, it really depends on what you want to do with this. I'm not aware of. Whether the owners are actually maintaining these trees or not. Um, because the GID was dissolved, the GID was a city entity. Um, I believe that those, you know, trees are still owned by the city and they can maintain them as they see fit, especially if it's in your budget. So I guess it just depends. Whether there's an existing kind of informal agreement where the business owners have kept up with this and you want to continue that. Or whether that's not happening and you want to be able to kind of step in and do what you.
Probably some have, some haven't.
That's okay too.
Right, right.
But it says in this original agreement, the business property owner can do what they want because the GID didn't want to be involved with that part of it. What it says.
Well, it says they may, it doesn't say that.
Oh.
Yeah.
They're not required to. The property owner doesn't have to do it, but they have permission to do it.
It's subject to an agreement with the GID, so I mean.
So is the question, if the business owner don't want to do nothing, what do we do? Is that the question?
I, I guess essentially, yes. Um, this, I think needs to be, um. A, a discussion moving forward, particularly in terms of we are entering the budget season. August first, uh, we'll start preparing information to pass along to you, uh, that. Primarily capital improvement kinds of orienting, uh, conversations. If, uh, as a council, you would choose to, um, consider this a priority. Then it would, it would require, uh, some monetary allocation to, to try to. Accomplish something if that were your desire. So that's the discussion.
Does council feel like we can do whatever we want with these trees then? Or does the business owners have to say?
They don't own the sidewalk, right?
No.
Business owners don't own the sidewalk, so.
It's their, eh, business owners, uh, property owners are responsible for maintaining the sidewalks, but they don't own them. Uh, on Main Street in particular, that. Uh, C dot Eastman if, is face a building to face a building. So given that. You know, C dot will be the first to tell you they have no responsibility for the sidewalk nor the curb. Therefore, the trees, uh, don't come into play either, so.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't taken a look at the exact, exact location of all these trees, but if they're within city right of way, it's city property. Um, this resolution was just allowing the business owners to maintain them after setting an agreement. You know, indemnifying for any possible image to people or to property that could happen from them maintaining those trees or trimming those trees. Um, which is pretty common to, you know, allow somebody to maintain if they want to, but have an agreement with the city to make sure that there's no. Liability from that.
They've gotten too big. Something needs to be done with them. I mean, like he.
So the old ordinance of that just upped us from the eighteen hundreds. Does it apply at all or was that just for?
Only if you're gonna tie, only if you're gonna tie a horse.
I was just gonna say, I was.
I, I thought that was real.
I'm assuming that was for entertainment purposes.
Yes. I, I tried to put a little levity in the topic.
I just laughed, but I, I thought it was funny. Anyway, so what, what, I guess, what is the? I mean, we're having just a discussion, but do, what, like possible direction are you looking for from us?
Well, I, I guess part of the discussion is, uh.
I mean, does it go side by side with the next item?
Would you, yes, in a sense. Would you like, uh, me to begin some conversations with some arborists to, to get some? Costs related to trimming? Um, removal? I, I don't know, you.
I mean, I just think it's removal is a tragedy, but.
It's gonna be, I think, really, we're going to have pushback from the business owners. There are some, some business owners that are, um, very territorial with those trees. And I do know that in the past, um, sometime the.
Yeah.
The city did, um. Contract with an arborist to come down and trim them, shape them, that type thing. I know, I believe we did it. Um, a couple of times when, when I was here before. But to, for us to take possession of those trees or make a decision of what's gonna be done. I, I think we need to communicate with the business owners. I think we're gonna have a lot on our hands if we don't.
So this resolution went into effect twenty fourteen with the GID. The GID's gone, what, twenty-two?
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty-one? Something like that. So do we need to address that since like this resolution doesn't really apply anymore? And maybe have a new one on, you know, if business owners want to be responsible for their trees or whatever it may be. I mean, do we need something that formal?
If, if you wanted to do that, then yes.
Do we have, still have a Walsworth Downtown revitalization?
That's, uh, yes, that's, uh, Aubrey, Aubrey Lykan heads that group and they do the plants. Uh, pots and that kind of thing.
Shouldn't we just meet with them and see what everybody wants? They're more familiar with business owners and probably talk.
That sounds like a good idea.
Okay, I think that'd be a good idea. Okay. Let's try to set up something with them.
Could they either come to like the next, like URA meeting or something, that since it's kind of where. We've been talking about some of those improvements on Main Street and since council's on URA anyway. It might just be a good place to have that discussion.
Okay.
And probably put out some kind of flyer to every, all the business owners on that street.
Well, I thought.
So they know we're gonna be talking about it.
I thought that's what we talked about in the URA meeting.
Oh, they're gonna. Facade program.
All right.
Yep.
Right?
That'll work.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Anything else? Number six.
Start the conversation.
Number six, discussion with possible direction of sidewalk replacement program.
So again, this lends itself to, um. Part of the discussion about the trees. Uh, I won't take credit for this, uh, you know, as his saying goes. If you don't have to invent it, steal it. So, um, I could steal this from. Uh, another community because I thought it was a pretty comprehensive approach to sidewalks. Um, for those of you who may not be familiar, the Urban Renewal Authority has identified a facade program. For, um, downtown area between fourth and ninth initially. Uh, where they will, uh, they've essentially, um, established twenty-five thousand dollars. For a program that's a match with property owners to help, uh, improve the facades of downtown businesses. And discussions, uh, I thought, you know, it seems appropriate that we look at things from a comprehensive standpoint. If you're gonna talk about facades, then if you can't see them because of the overgrown trees, then you. Identify the trees, but if you can't walk downtown because of the condition of the sidewalks, then, you know, uh, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a. Catch twenty-two sort of thing.
Park horse.
Um, the. Particular, uh, aspect of this again is a match program with the property owner. Uh, there are funds available, uh, in the streets program. Uh, the tax that is, uh, that our citizens approved. Uh, identified specifically for street improvements. This qualifies as a street improvement. So you could, uh, allocate funds specifically for this program and in whatever amount. You know, again, this is a topic of conversation. If it were to be rolled out, I think it would be appropriate to roll it out in twenty twenty-four. Not necessarily this fall, but again, ahead of budget conversations. Um, these are all things that, that need to be planned for ahead of time.
So that URA, when we had put forward the twenty-five thousand, that was also contingent on a grant that you were gonna apply for too, right?
Yeah, it.
I thought, I thought his motion was clear that it, you had to apply for the grant too.
You thought they had seventy-five thousand in the bank number. I think that's what they're.
Uh, uh, I think Carl's motion included that we go after the money. I can't remember whatever, he talked about the grant. And it was contingent on applying on that grant.
So it was trying to leverage the funding from the EIF that, uh, and. As he, as he identified at that point.
That gave us fifty.
Would be a twenty twenty-four program, so.
That's what I remember.
Yeah, that it was contingent.
Double check in the minutes.
So just out of curiosity, I know I've always been told sidewalk's responsibility to, to the landowner or the building owner.
Yes.
But.
We've all been told that.
No, but I think in a good attorney, and if somebody got hurt going down one of our sidewalks, uh. Counsel, what do you think?
Well, in the Muni.
But he's got some liability.
That's why the Muni code was included with this to. Sort of frame the conversation.
So I know that while I was on council, we had two claims presented to us for tripping and, uh, falling. And it was asked the, um. Uh, was it Death Walls Building? I don't, was it Death Walls? I don't remember there, where Museum of Friends is now.
Where the trees are.
Yeah, and they, they turned it in to us and it was denied by SIRS and it was denied by. The city and it was referenced back to the building owner. That's all I know. I've always been told that it's not the city's responsibility.
Are we totally not level?
I think it depends on the claim and on the facts.
Well, if it's a trip on the sidewalk, so just assume it's a trip on the sidewalk.
I mean, yeah, I, I will say under the. I mean, yeah, I, I will say under the Muni code, the, the owner is, is responsible for keeping the sidewalks in a safe condition.
Legally.
Even though the G I D and the city was involved in planting the trees.
That's what's in the code, yeah.
Well, if we have, if we don't have liability issues, that's less urgent to do anything. I'd like to see them fixed.
Doesn't matter. It'd be more urgent if we had a big liability issue.
Well, and I think it's a, I think it's a program that can be continued, um. As, as you progress through town, so.
Yeah.
But you're gonna have some landowner, uh, business owner, they ain't gonna wanna spend a nickel.
Right, right.
Or they can't.
Yeah, or they can't, yeah.
Can we just, uh, uh, join this one with the downtown tree thing to get together and work on this kind of joint?
I think it's a comprehensive approach to it, yes.
Any other conversation? Let's move on. Uh, review and direction of water sewer supervisor job description and posting.
You guys have anything?
So Ms. Davis, did you, um, I see a lot of stuff redlined. Um, so did you look at others? Did you get other, um, communities?
They're attached.
Pardon me?
They're attached.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, um, I, I did, guess I didn't read that all of it. I read the, what you have done. So is the, um, is the education something? That you feel, um, is. I know you said at the end of the last meeting, you said that they needed to be, um, certified, right? So if we hire, if that is a requirement that they get that certification. And in eighteen months, whatever, and they don't get it, we have. Two years invested in an individual.
Well, I would hope we'd be monitoring as we go.
Okay, but we, it hasn't been done.
Right.
So i- am I correct? It hasn't been done.
That's correct.
Okay, so what my question is, is do you believe that that is something? That needs to be in there as a requirement?
Well, I think if you don't put it in there, the difficulty you have is that you're in the same situation. That you. Currently contend we have, in that you have people who don't have the background, don't have the knowledge or the training. To, to do the job. The, the tough thing with those particular positions. In this day and age is that there are so many state regulations in how you handle things. That if people aren't, uh, kept abreast of what that is. If they don't understand the context of what they're doing, then. It puts the city in a situation that. Is really difficult and requires oil orders. Or fines, or, eh, you know, simply because they, the state doesn't accept, we didn't know.
Right.
As an excuse. So, you know, I think from that standpoint, class D is, is. A basic operator, um. License. Class A is what is required to operate both of our plants without, uh, O R Cs. So, you know, it's A, B, C, and D, expecting, um, a D certification in eighteen months is not out of the question. It can be done, certainly can be done, so.
Yeah, I know it can be done, but it isn't intense, so I.
I, I can attest for who was before.
Hmm, um. No, I understand, I understand what you're, what you're saying. I'm just, um. I just have some.
So that has been modified down from a B.
Right, I saw that.
Which, uh, uh, is a six to eight year commitment. To accomplish that conventionally because of the time between testing.
Well, I appreciate it and I think it should be, um, any employee's goal to improve themselves. And especially, you know, if their, their job requires it, I agree, but. And we have some other issues that go along with it. If it's required, for one, we need, um. Required for some other positions as well, in my opinion.
I don't disagree. That's why I included the other supervisory positions as well.
We're not actually looking for a gas supervisor, are we?
No.
You have.
But, eh, you know, again, from a certification standpoint.
We'll have the.
You know, those were, those are some of the requirements you'll see in, in different departments.
I assume that's what that was, yeah.
Yeah, so that was my intent, just for you to be able to look at the departments across the board.
Right.
Cause we should be somewhat consistent across the board anyway.
Exactly. If, if we're gonna review one, then, then we probably need to, uh, go through the other three as well.
So you need our approval to post this?
Uh, eh, I need re- recommendations, suggestions, um, eh, you know. We've also included a, a list of opportunities for posting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, kinda runs the gamut.
We're just, we're looking, you're gonna advertise for just water sewer right now, or?
How many positions are open?
That's all I have open right now.
It's the street and alleys, but.
Oh, I don't have a, a supervisor for streets and alleys. I just have two individuals in streets and alleys.
And parks.
True, but we don't.
I don't have a, what, Ray Herman's the lead there, but.
Ray Bustos.
Yeah.
Ray Bustos, sorry.
And he's.
On Gray.
Fine.
No, he's full time.
Oh, okay. I thought it's.
I think the water sewer is the main one for now, anyway.
It is.
You know, as long as we're on. Looking for people to, uh, job postings that it was mentioned that we're gonna need a planning and zoning. That should be posted. There's an opening there.
On the committee, yeah, there is.
Uh.
Can we stick to this? If I reverse before we get off.
Let's do this.
I personally feel like Public Works Director just needs to be taken out of there. We don't have one. We have no plans to hire one. I think that should be scratched and just be that it records.
It, it was in there, I.
I know, but we don't have that position. There's no discussion of hiring that position. So until that point happens, I think that needs to be scratched off. Because why put it in there if that position doesn't exist? So, I mean, that, and that's just a tiny little detail in there. Um, so I guess my kind of. If we're kind of downgrading those qualifications from a B to a D. I mean, is this more of a, you said a lead, um, I've seen the word foreman. Is it more that than, I mean, supervisor? I mean, like what? Like what is this role, the way that you've rewritten it?
So you'll, you'll see based upon the, the other criteria. Um, there is, still remains a lot of supervisory capability, a lot of. Uh, processes and procedures that need to be, uh, established and followed. Uh, confined space entry trenching functions as well as, uh, a level three water distribution operator. And a wastewater collections. Those certifications are specific to pipelines. In, in a sense.
Right.
So there's still some additional certifications that will, um. Improve their ability to actually function in, in that position.
Right, and that's, so that's why I was saying, you know, I was asking, like, is this like a different level of a position? And then they get this, and then there's other certifications and it's a different position than, do you know what I mean? That, I mean, cause you kind of said, you know, get this D, class D in eighteen months. Well, then what happens? Like, there's nothing in here that spells out the next step.
So that for this particular, well, if they, if they don't have these, then it'll take them two years to get the.
Right, but what. I mean, our, I'm hoping that our goal is to hire a long-term person to do this.
But at that point, then you introduce a public works director position. Or, uh, you know, there's other levels that you can define within these particular departments. That other communities have defined as well. I, I think we need to.
I mean, I just feel like we should address those higher classifications, A, B, C, like. I, I think it has to be an expectation of, oh, I can just come there, get D and then hang out for twenty years. Like, I think it has to be really clear that the expectation is to move to the next level over the.
So there, there's some.
At time.
Certification specific to this position?
Hmm.
That would be more water wastewater collections and distribution.
That you did not include in here?
Right, that would be the opportunity to go beyond that. Your plant operator certifications. I- in my opinion, because so much of what this supervisor or this individual does with lines. Affects the, the distribution of the water as well as the collection and treatment of the water.
Right.
That they have to have an understanding of how those plants operate and that's. Thus that D certification for that. They can certainly go beyond that. And, and perhaps at that point, as they evolve with that. Uh, operator, and, you know, they could then supervise them as well and. To a point where perhaps at some juncture, we no longer need, uh, an O R C. But that's.
That's down the road. I mean, I just, I mean, I think, I just would like to see that, you know, further training, further classification, further. There has to be something else in here that the long-term expectation is, like, you don't just get D and you're done and life is good.
That's part of the evaluation.
There's other, I know, but if it's not in the job description that you expect it and you hit eighteen months, two years later. And so they get that and they're like, yeah, I'm done, I've got my job description. Like, I, I mean, I think even if it's just a, like, you know. Further classification or something like that, but the expectation is that we expect that you will get better than a D.
Yeah, I can see the point of trying to encourage them to.
Yeah.
I guess.
Like, eh, like, a person could see this as a career, like, okay, well, you can get here and then I can move here. I mean.
Is the class B C D L because of snowplow or how many?
Most of our, eh, we can't, our, our dump trucks, um, require a C D L.
Back truck.
We can't, yeah, the back truck requires a C D L.
I know you at least got one guy already has one, so I don't know.
We currently have three C D Ls.
Yeah.
And is this certification paid for by the city?
Um.
As part of their compensation?
That's your decision.
And so I think with the room, where I'm kind of stuck on like a high, what if somebody comes to us with a C? You know what I mean? And we're not even addressing that. So, you know, someone who comes with a C or higher. Should be compensated for that higher certification and we're not even addressing it. We're just like saying, yeah.
So you could do special, minimum special qualifications.
Okay.
You wanna just change that verbiage to read minimum special qualifications. If they come with more. Then you can, uh, from a negotiating standpoint, certainly address that in salary.
Compensate.
I, I think at some point, you can't address everything.
Oh.
Job description, so.
No, you got a fifteen thousand dollar gap that you could address. The higher certification would be higher pay. I think that's a big enough gap and then adjust that way. Is the fifty to sixty-five thousand appropriate for this job description, you think, with comparables and with Southern Colorado state?
Well, so, if you, if you went to, uh, Springfield, uh, similar, we tried to, I tried to identify similar sized communities. They have a forty to eighty range. Currently, they pay seventy. Um, most of what I've seen. It, excuse me, let me finish my thought here. C M L does a, uh, comprehensive, uh. Review annually of salary ranges based upon a, a gamut of job descriptions. And we're certainly within those bounds based upon.
I just wanna make sure we're close.
Water sewer supervisor. The only difference is if you live in Crested Butte. Um, you know, those communities where the cost of living is, is just. Abominable.
So my question is, is this an exempt position? Meaning they're not entitled to overtime, they're exempt, their salary, that's what they get.
I need to find out based upon, because the criteria have changed a little bit.
And that's what I'm saying.
I know.
D is too low. I mean, you've gotta come up, I think, by twenty-four, twenty-five, it's supposed to be at fifty-five thousand is the minimum, for example. I believe this should be an exempt position, because you can get.
But.
Live on overtime.
But exempt qualification has to. Identify supervisory capacity and that kind of, that's what I need to confirm.
That's what I'm saying. It does. That's, I mean, I think.
I think it's the number of supervisors and can they hire and fire. So there's. Let me check into the verbiage on what constitutes currently exempt versus none.
Well, I think you wanna leave some things variable, so anytime you're interviewing, eh.
You had a different individual, you, he may want different things or she.
And so I like leaving a lot of those things open, uh. One guy may want hourly, the next guy or girl may want to be on salary and. But then you, eh, then you put yourself in a position, well, if you do need overtime, what do you do?
Then you gotta give them time off. There, there's a catch twenty-two both ways, and I think you kind of accommodate the applicant to what they want.
Or I think there's. There are things around exempt versus non-exempt that.
Yeah.
You have to, there's laws.
There's laws.
Yes, yes.
She'll have to do what's the legal.
I mean, I'm exempt. I gotta just work.
But I'm not sure we wanna tie our hands. I mean, do we wanna make some of the exempt that's just their minimum and?
Well, eh, I think it should be, it should be defined as an exempt or non-exempt position. Some positions allow overtime with advance, you know, um, approvals, so.
Okay, but let's just approve something. We gotta advertise.
What's everybody's pleasure?
Any more comments? Do we want any changes to this?
I think the exemption, non-exempt has to be addressed. I think we have to address that.
So.
Regardless, I mean, if it's not exempt, it's not exempt.
Fun, exempt or non-exempt, we'll define what that is. I will send you an email if you will approve something tonight. If, if you wanna move on this, then authorize me to do something, uh, contingent upon the exempt, non-exempt definition.
So. Um, you know, Veronica, are you pretty, you, you feel that you want Public Works Director removed? Absolutely, just in case we get a Public Works Director in the future. Does it hurt anything to leave it in there?
I guess not, but I don't know. I just think the cleaner the better, but whatever, everyone's pleasures.
So I make a motion to approve the job description, water sewer supervisor. Um, with the Public Works Director terminology removed, under supervision received. And Ms. Davis will determine whether the proper classification is exempt. Or non-exempt and advertise it as such.
Second. I got a motion by Jack DeSice, second by Don Martinez. Everybody understand the motion? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Which one to miss?
Yes.
Would you be here?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm just gonna say no, because I just don't like some of the writing in it.
Benny's?
Yes.
Striker?
Yes.
Mayor's on it?
Yes. Uh, Mayor and City Council comments.
Uh, did, so could we say? Didn't we need to do some direction on that advertising? Yeah, yeah.
Oh, where are you advertising?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you wanna?
Motion carries.
I was just saying, I thought there was that second piece of the direction, like, you have the job description, now the direction on what to post or how to post it.
What are your plans on where we're posting this?
You need direction from us.
So the job posting opportunities that we've identified, if you're comfortable with that.
I say all of the above, yeah.
Okay, um, I will.
Are you gonna repost it in locally too, or just go with these?
I heard that. I heard that the opinion was it was a waste of time, so.
I mean, I think you're gonna get more bang for your buck here.
But you tell me.
So why, why is it a waste of time to post here? Uh, that posts locally?
Part of the indication the other night that. The local posting, you weren't going to get anybody, but.
Well, I would, I'd post it locally.
Well, yeah.
I would too.
I would say.
I, I just, I mean, I've. I heard a different version Monday night, so.
Well, I kind of felt locally should just be like our website or like that type of stuff. I mean, I just don't know if. We get a bang for buck of the newspaper posting.
If we do post on our website and post at the Job Service Center.
Yeah.
And then all other uh, locations that you have. You need a motion on that? Yeah, we're probably gonna pay him.
Um, I, I don't believe, I think that that's sufficient uh, indication. We'll shoot for two weeks and. Be able to report if we have anything based upon our next council meeting in August. Fair.
Hang by me.
Can I say something? I read that ad and for seventeen bucks, you're not gonna get anybody to dig ditches and do all the paperwork. That's all I got to say. I read that ad, it's just.
I don't think it was listed for seventeen dollars.
Eight bucks. And, and if I'm gonna drink that water, y'all need to get it together, hire somebody and give them a house. And a decent salary and get off the exempt, no overtime, because I got a blind deaf man in a wheelchair, electric wheelchair, who they. Overtime to death. Now, I, I, I think you really think about how cheap you're gonna be with the water you feed to children.
Okay, appreciate your comment. We got to continue.
All my jobs are taken by the prison. Exempt myself, because I'm below a fifty casket fuse here. Everything I'm hearing, because I just went through it in Morro Bay, California, and they put my husband in an electric wheelchair.
What is your name, ma'am?
You should see me on Court TV. Then I'll give you my name. Y'all need to stand up and get everybody in your neighbors in here, because I, I'm telling you, at the Safeway, I have people coming up to me, saying, some of them. Made them sign over a living trust and she's crying in the Safeway. Who did that to her? Oh, I'm telling the FBI is here, because I call them every morning. I'm not stupid. I'm not gonna sit here and y'all need to stand up right now.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor and City Council comments. Directions. Fred, you have something. Let's start with you.
I just have a question for Gay. I had directed an email to her on June the eighth on the. Uh, contract on the agricultural ditch cleaning award to H and H Forestry Services. And I've. Contacted Tyler. He actually contacted me yesterday. And he still hasn't heard anything on that. I know Mr. Martinez was adamant that. That contract be signed immediately. So that we got a, a good, the good price on it. I just want to know where the, where you are with that.
Um, we kind of left it up to Mr. Huff. He requested that we be available through December. Uh, based upon his timeframe.
Understanding, because he's, he questioned me. Why, he, he wants to schedule and that was in your. In my memo to you. He's, he's concerned with the scheduling and that too, having done a thing about it and.
Well, I, I think Mr. Huff certainly has my contact information and can contact me.
I thought that was up to you to contract.
He left it open until December of twenty twenty-three, so I. Was certainly giving him the, the bounds to do what he needed to over the summer, but I'll be.
I let you know on the eighth of June. I'm just wondering, have you contacted him?
Happy to follow up with him.
So, did I understand what you just said? I apologize. So we don't have the contract signed with him?
We had an agreement based upon his um, bid. That is, that is presented, yes. So.
But it's not in writing, so his bid was probably good for thirty days, more than likely.
Uh, no. His bid was good through December of twenty twenty-three if we.
That's written down somewhere.
It's in the council uh, minutes as well, so.
Well, you advertised it for that one? How did it get to December?
He needed time, he needed to be able to get in the ditches when we weren't running water. And so by the time we got it signed, the cooler was gonna be in priority. So he had to wait till after the cooler. And so he, there's windows. When the cooler's out of priority that it can be worked on and when the Goma's within are out of priority, when it could be worked on. And that's why it was such a long time span, so that he'd have time to get in and out whenever the ditch was dry.
You were adamant about getting that contract signed immediately.
Right, and I think we've, we've made a deal with him.
That's my, my issue. He's contacted me to wonder why he hasn't been contacted to have that signed.
I don't know.
We'll follow up.
Yeah, see, see if it's still, you know, if, if we still can have it. Okay, anybody else? Council comments?
So. Oh, you, did you have another one? Did you think it's not? So, um, we had had a, a discussion and we had an executive session. And um, we didn't take any action after the executive session. I understood that it was gonna be on the July fifth agenda. And I haven't heard anything about it, so I'm a little bit concerned. Um, that we have not taken any action on it. And it was uh, an executive session with our water engineers. And our water attorney.
So you have a resolution in place? So the conversation that Ms. Vera and I had was that the resolution from twenty twenty-one. That gave clear direction. Uh, about the city's intent that you came out of executive and confirmed that that was the approach that you wanted to continue. So we, I think it was our understanding in my conversation with Ms. Vera that we, maybe we didn't need to do that again.
My understanding was it was supposed to be voted on July fifth meeting.
Again, uh.
We didn't vote on it then.
We didn't give any direction then. That's right. If we didn't give any direction.
Well, the direction is in place from twenty twenty-one.
So Ms. Mays asked.
Okay.
Question in the executive session. And we were all sitting there and the answer was, you would get with our attorney and you would ask her. And then we would come back in July, the first of July, and we would vote on it based on what information you had. And that is what Ms. Mays asked. We, as the rest of the council, made no decisions in that meeting. As we can't make any decisions. We can't make a decision whether we agree with it, it applies, or if we want to change our action. Is that correct?
Okay, so I guess now would be an appropriate time if you wanted to give specific direction. Based upon either changing or reaffirming the resolution. I, I.
So what was the resolution number? I didn't see it and it was not provided.
I need to circle back on this offline. I wasn't aware that any further action was needed. Um.
Well, that's what I'm saying. And if you're saying I asked something in executive session, that's not direction. I can't.
No, I'm saying you ask a question for us to get the response. You were asking for feedback is what you were doing.
So I'm saying, but we still didn't come back out here and give direction.
No, it was gonna be followed up at the July meeting, so I think we need to have clarification on all of this.
Okay, so.
Am I speaking what everybody else?
I remember something was supposed to have been done at the July fifth meeting, after that work session or executive session, whatever it was.
So that if we present a copy of the. Resolution at the next meeting, then you can provide specific direction on how you would like to proceed, is that?
Well, has there been any procedure done since?
They're continuing with um, what was discussed from a due diligence standpoint. They've continued with that. Based upon the conversation that was had in that session. So they have not changed course.
So would you want to provide us with the resolution?
Is the resolution in your? I see ordinances on your site and usable code. I don't see resolution.
So that.
There, there.
Can we look at it there?
It, it was in your. I. I thought that I had sent it to you um. In that meeting in July prior to the.
On July fifth?
Yes.
That was in our packet or you sent it separate?
It was an enclosure. I, I was pretty su- I'm pretty sure.
Well, we can look.
I'll look it up and resend it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Anything on T A? Did they get anywhere?
They're still trying to track that line. It doesn't follow a straight path.
And it's six foot deep, I know.
Right. We had to tow a vehicle. To get it out of the way so they could continue with the potholing.
How far did they go? I'll go through them all.
They're up in front of Taco Bell, which is where the car was. So they've.
It's still PVC?
It's PVC all the way, so far.
So I don't know if. It's kind of appropriate or not, but. I'll put this in a motion. We'll see what happens here. Um, I just make a motion that we pay Harold Bonasalle the thirty-four twenty-five. Which is fifty percent of what he paid to get his um, lines put in, and that's what he asked for. And I think we're be done with that.
Only he's asking for sixty-eight twenty-five.
Asking for fifty percent of that. I clarified that when he was up there. Uh, that's why I ask my clarifying questions.
I, I got a motion by Veronica Mays and a second by Nikki Hill, the reimbursement.
Jackie.
No, Nick did. The two seconds. Oh, Jackie just made a comment. Or you said you agree. Yeah. Getting late. I hear you. For thirty-four twelve fifty?
Thirty-four twenty-five. I didn't split the twenty-five, I just went thirty-four twenty-five.
Okay, thirty-four twenty-five.
Thirty-four twenty-five.
Okay. Ms. Davis, was there an agreement to help him? Uh, was that our? The line through the alley was our responsibility.
So Mr. Bonaselli purchased a sewer tap.
Right.
A sewer line runs down Welton. Mr. Bonaselli knew the sewer line runs down Welton. However, I don't know what the conversations. Evolved and included. But at some point, there was discussion of the alley, but there was never a sewer line in the alley. There's never been a sewer line in the alley. So, you know, for the city to assume the responsibility for. One line. To accommodate an individual who knew when he built the house. And it, and again, it goes back to when you build a, everybody else ties on to Welton. Um, for a reason, but he built a walkout basement. So be able, to be able to tie on to Welton then. He was going to have to lift, put a lift in. So those were the options. Um, he designed the house with a walkout basement. Knowing that the sewer line was on Welton. And then the discussion about going into the alley, which obviously is downhill from that.
Right.
So.
Makes more sense to go that way, but.
Well, so I, you know, I wasn't here when they put Welton in. Apparently, he was because.
He's been here a while.
Put it in.
Yeah, I know.
Because I understand.
He did all them lots. He built, bought them all and.
So, you know, anyway, um, the three options based upon the council at the time directed. That there were the three options which I presented to him. He signed, he chose option number three. Which was, we would provide the materials, he would hire the contractor.
And split the cost?
No.
Nope.
He said.
Nope. That was never part of the agreement.
Uh, wasn't option one or two that we'd split the cost?
Option number one was he could put a, we would give him a tap on Welton and he could lift to the Welton tap. Option number two was that we would provide the materials, contract with Parker Excavating. And split the cost with him for the labor. Option number three was that we would provide the materials, he provided his own contractor. He chose option number three in writing.
Was that negotiated? The issue wasn't negotiated. Another thing, Mr.
Uh, so I'm, I'm sorry if, if.
Supervisor at the time. Had him run his sewer line to that hour.
I, I know.
Sir Bonasalle didn't come to this council until long past Morgan Bean gone. So the first time it came here, we were already past that. That's what I'm saying. I just.
She had it in the, in the, on the agenda for, by the address. All she had to do is put Harold Bonasalle sewer issue.
Well, my motion stands. My motion stands.
There's two sides to this. Yeah, our building inspector should have caught it.
I made my motion based on, I made my motion based on the city of Walsenburg agreed to pay half of twenty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, you were gonna pay roughly fifteen thousand dollars, so I'm looking for a simple compromise here. I asked him tonight for clarification of what he wanted. He asked for half of the sixty-eight twenty-five. I'm saying thirty-four twenty-five and we're done with this matter.
Yeah, let's vote.
If they agreed to fifteen, they should agree to three.
Absolutely.
Can you call for the vote, please?
I got a motion.
Veronica motion, I seconded it.
I got a motion in a second to reimburse Mr. Bonaselli for thirty-four twenty-five. For the sewer issue that is home on Welton. Any further discussion? The motion is by Veronica Mays, the second is by Jackie Sykes. Further discussion?
No.
Roll call. Yes. No. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
So I have one other thing. Um, we have an election coming up in November. Have we contracted with the county for that election?
We're waiting for them to provide an I G A. It's their responsibility to write it, present it.
Have we asked them for that or were they?
Individual.
Okay, thank you.
The, the I G A was set this morning. I'm gonna go over, I'm gonna go over it with Ms. Davis tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you.
The I, I G A that's in the executive, what I G A talks about?
It's for the election. We have to enter into an agreement with the county to, for them to be able to conduct um, our election. It's for uh the election. We have to enter into an agreement with the county to, for them to be able to conduct um our election. Or that we participate in the general election.
Don't we always do that?
Send IGA every year.
Okay.
It just, we haven't talked about it and we're just getting close, so that's why I asked.
So Ms. Davis, is there um an ordinance uh in the municipal code, are there penalties for selling water? For an individual or a business selling water or delivering water or donating water outside of the city limits or anywhere?
So I don't know the exact verbiage, but I understand that there is an ordinance that prohibits the resale, I believe is how it's, but I would have to look it up to be precise.
It says donating as well. So are you aware of another place that does that?
Am I aware of?
Yes.
There are rumors that there are people who um have conducted those. Do I have absolute confirmation? No, ma'am.
So maybe we should look into that if we're gonna follow all the rules for everybody.
Perhaps.
I'd appreciate it.
If you would like to send me an email to that effect.
Thank you. And economics. Sure. And economic development, they're looking at building um seven homes in um Wahitoy is what I understood.
Fifteen.
Okay, so uh whatever the number is. And have you told them, have you given a limit on the amount of taps that they're gonna be able to have because we have lack of water?
Yes, ma'am.
So when did that become? I mean, that, I don't know anything about it.
Exactly. Um, you weren't on the board at the time. Um, the seated council, this has been four months ago. Economic Development made a presentation to the council requesting uh between s- fifteen to twenty-two taps. We had uh followed up with our water engineer at the time based upon what we have available for augmentation. Um, we identified that we could accommodate the fifteen taps from a residential standpoint. And that was what was approved by the council that evening was authorization to allow them to have access to fifteen water taps.
So I understand that you have a building per- permit issued to Fremont Paving. And I don't know whether it's concrete as well. Okay, I don't know what they are doing is and they, I know they purchased some property out there. So is.
Three-quarter inch water tap is what they've requested.
So do you know how much water they will be using?
They are hauling water in and that's their responsibility.
They are.
Three-quarter inch tap is merely for a bathroom and a uh like a break room.
Yeah, for the building, office building or something. Okay. So.
Let's not go into the concrete.
No.
We have to augment it though. It's not. Go ahead.
The consumptive use of uh the batch plant, that conversation from the get-go was that we could not accommodate uh the consumptive use of the batch plant for augment because of the augmentation.
Okay.
So they know that, cuz that that concerned me. I didn't know whether that was done or not.
So the uh one more thing I'd like to discuss. That we've talked about new property owners in Northlands being notified or being aware of the stipulations or the agreements that they have, right? So um, we talked about it being recorded on the deeds. I believe Mr. Moore uh said that 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 they were supposed to be recorded on the deeds. I don't believe that they are re- being recorded on the deeds. So I don't believe that that is um, I don't think that it's happening. And I believe that the reason it might, I don't know. I don't know. It's something that I would like you to look into.
So I don't know that that's within my purview to examine private property deeds, that's.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you something, okay? If you could have Ms. Vera look into the way the city of Walsenburg recorded the stipulation, the agreement. If the way that the city of Walsenburg recorded. Would you?
Now, we didn't, I saw the piece of land, it wasn't on that deed. But we're in the process of trying to.
So if you could, you always do, sir, and this. So Ms. Davis, would you have Ms. Vera?
You can draft, you can tell, you can have her.
Can you?
She works for you, so.
You can ask her directly.
Will you look into the way that the city of Walsenburg recorded the agreement with Northlands? And that it should be recorded on the property legal description versus the names of the people that were property owners at the time it was annexed. So if it's not recorded on the land and on the legal description, it may not be transferring. So if you could just clarify that for me, I would very much appreciate it. Is that clear what I'm asking?
As for certain properties, or do you want me to just look into it in general?
Well, it would be, it could be solved very easily if we, the city of Walsenburg, recorded that agreement on the legal descriptions versus the name of the property owner.
Sure.
Thank you. And that way it would align with the property and track with the property.
That's interesting.
Okay, the time is now eight fifty-seven. And the executive session has concluded. The participants in the executive session were Catherine Vera, Gaye Davis, Hill, Fred Ecker, Jackie Sykes.
Don Martinez.
Uh, Veronica Mays, Gary Vazani, and Rick Jennings was on the phone. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session and violations of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next agenda item is.
Is, I need to make a motion.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion that the city of Walsenburg accepts the county's IGA one-year contract with the six-month extension if we uh, choose to exercise that. That was sent by adminis, County Administrator Carla Young on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three at five thirteen PM.
Second. I got a motion by Veronica Mays, a second by Don Martinez. Uh, any discussion? Uh, just for clarification, this is actually the original proposal that the county commissioner sent to the Walsburg.
On June twentieth.
On June twentieth. Uh, giving us support up through six.
Six months.
Half a year in the twenty-four, which would put us to the end of, end of June twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ecker?
Yes.
Ms. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Vio?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Pizani?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Anything else that we wanna discuss, bring up?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay. Nicky Hill?
I'd like to make a motion that we terminate Mrs. Davis's contract tonight.
I got a motion? Well, second now motion. I got a motion by Nicky Hill, a second by Fred Ecker. Any discussion?
Yeah, I thought we were doing an evaluation. I mean, I, I, I just don't understand. I'm like. I mean, what is the plan?
Plan is unpleasant.
You've got an election coming up in November. You've got five new seats and this council is gonna make this decision based off of, I don't even know what. I thought we were gonna have a discussion about performance.
We did get it happen.
We were gonna have it now. It got moved on the agenda to after we came out of executive session. That was the next agenda item.
We're having a discussion. We had a motion a second that we can discuss. Ms. Davis, would you be interested in doing the dollar stuff and the grants and all of that stuff?
Hundred thousand dollars.
The answer is no. So noted. I, I do have an issue. We, we were out at, you know, the truck stop north of town with three months of porta potties. That's just uh, I got the guy from Chicago, Illinois calling me as soon as I get elected and that's going on and then uh, uh, we got a lot of residents and people that try to get answers from the city and it's always said that they don't get a call returned. Uh, I would love to see Gaye stay with, do what he's good at. Uh, I think we gotta do something else. Get in our utility departments to, all our departments to work.
I would like to have a plan to do that.
Nobody knocking on the door.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, it's.
You have no idea what that will.
And that personal and it's not, it's, we don't have a plan. Right. The last time this plan happened, we had noticed the person was leaving and they made, we made up a plan. This is ridiculous.
Um, so I, I would just advise council of, of a couple of things. Um, one being that um, if there's not an agreement for Mrs. She doesn't have to sign certain releases of plans, so there's some exposure, some liability to the city um, in terminating with her without, you know, coming to some kind of mutual agreement as to the termination or, you know, allowing her to resign. Um, and then, I mean, just thinking in small words, it may make sense to have a long-term plan of having an interim city legislature come in. Um, it, it could be very disruptive to. Screw with this. I mean, that, the, those are, it's totally up to city council what they'd like to do. But those are my two big pieces of it.
It's it's just out of bounds to to summarily fire the best administrator that we've had since I've been here. Now, whether she is the greatest in the world, I'm sure she would agree that she's not. She's learning the job as she goes. An administrator of city of anybody, anywhere before. Uh, she's been doing a great job with what she has to work with. I can't support getting rid of her with no plan to move forward, or at least no articulated plan to move forward. Uh, who's gonna run the city tomorrow? Uh,
Beyond.
It's just too much. Now, we're, we're gonna throw throw her job onto the employees we have left. That's not fair to them.
Again. And that, and they don't have the skill set to do that.
And they've got a job to do already. They don't have the time to devote to her job. To filling in a forty-hour plus a week job, cuz I know it's a plus, cuz I've seen her down here on Sundays. Uh.
I seen the applications the last time we posted the job.
Yeah.
The same token, we cannot continue. Gaye does great, that's what she does. But whoever wrote this city administrator's description, you think the description for the water sewer guy was extensive? Her, her description, her contract's nuts. There's no one person could do what you're asking of her. I would love to have her do what she's good at. We'll figure out some way to take care of that. Our billing is still bad. That's, none of that's been addressed.
And this is gonna make it better?
So if we fire her.
Like you're going, I don't.
If we fire her, who's gonna do the grants? We say that she's good at that and I agree that she's good at that. She already said that she would.
So do it for a hundred grand.
So we pay her a hundred grand to do the grants and we pay the new administrator how much?
Hundred grand.
Hundred grand? How do, how do the city, how do citizens of Walsburg come out ahead in that deal?
They don't.
The track record, who wants to take the position?
Thank you.
Well, yeah.
So Ms. Davis, are there people that, this is the, the, an issue? Okay, so we have very few people in our town coming to our town. There's, there's not a lot of workers. We all know that that's an issue. And I believe that one of the things that I hear, okay, I don't, I, I'm just telling you that I hear, is that you are very set in who you will and will not work with. Okay, there was crucified, crucified last meeting because somebody said that somebody didn't wanna work with another person. Now, I understand that there are people that are qualified that have stepped forward and said they would want to, they would help us out. And you have said, I won't work with them because of so and so and so and so. Okay?
Uh, why I'm not really.
I don't know. So first of all.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know where you're getting your source.
Okay.
But I don't think it's very accurate, or if I think I know where that source is.
Okay.
I, I think that there's a whole basis there. So if a person completes an application. You don't have it off, you don't have it listed. You don't have it advertised and you haven't hired for it, for it. So how can you hire somebody when you've removed it from the website? How, how do they apply? Why would you move it? Why would you remove a job that is vacant from the website? I don't remove the job descriptions from the website. If it is, and, and I don't know, so first of all, I don't know which job you're referring to. Okay, is there, have you said that about building inspectors? So the building inspector, we have a candidate has agreed to take the position and we're working with that. And what qualifications do they have? They have a construction background. So no qualifications for a building inspector?
More than what the last one had.
So, so I think.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, wasn't he a contractor?
He wasn't certified. He wasn't.
Person isn't certified.
I hope and they'll get certified.
So first of all, again, as a new councilperson, what you are not aware and probably may not be aware of is that we have contracted with a company to provide the plan review and the commercial inspections that require the greatest amount of certification. So that was the direction that I had received from the city council prior to this. That in light of the fact that we could not find a certified inspector, we had to have a contracted firm who could fill that void. That is the approach that we took. And what was the name of that? It's AEC West. I was here. I know about that. Okay. So what are you doing and what is your volunteer doing? So the volunteer assists in paperwork. Following up with contractors to make sure that they have their insurance. They've paid their permit. And we're tracking from that standpoint. Do they go out and discuss things with contractors? So they do, particularly when the contractor on jobs has yet to a complete their paperwork for a permit for an application. They have not paid their permit fees, nor do they have stamped engineered drawings to present, to even pull a permit. So in light of that, if they are traveling around, they may ask the question because they're certainly aware of the fact that they do not have paperwork in place to, to even begin a job, let alone finish one. So there is an opening for a building inspector. Yes, until this person steps into the position. So I don't know that that has anything to do with it if I would ask that you just call for the vote.
Any other discussion?
I think it's a huge mistake with no plan to go forward. At all. I mean, I thought that we would have a performance evaluation tonight. We would discuss it. It wasn't in the contract, so this was obviously an evaluation that was asked for. In that we could maybe come to some terms on maybe some probation or something that would make some people in council happy, but to just throw the baby out with the bathwater and end up in a worse position than we were when Ms. Davis came here to us. I'm appalled. Who's gonna now do this? Think the volunteer's gonna stay? I'd be surprised if other people are gonna stay. Who is gonna pick up day-to-day operations? What happens when there's a water break tomorrow? You think our two water people are gonna be able to go out? Who are they gonna call? Who's gonna make sure that every single thing is in order?
You have a campaign promises to try and propose with a couple of people in the city and that's why you're.
Couldn't be so farther from the truth.
Well, you guys.
I mean, this is what I don't understand. You say that TA.
Really?
You say that. You say.
Let's just vote. I'm ready to vote cuz I'm tired of listening to this.
No, I, you, I hear, no, I don't speak here, Jackie. I have the right to speak. And what I'm saying is, you guys come here new on council, you got two people who are appointed to this council that were not even elected by the people of Walsburg. I sat through a recall, I only won by one, but I stood my ground because I was here for the right reasons. And I'm not here to send this city back into turmoil of what I had to step into when I first got on. That's what I'm saying. You're telling me that TA came to you and said, this has happened, this has happened. Why haven't they come to council and told us that? Whenever people come to me to complain, come to council and tell everybody. I am one of seven people who can make a decision. And for you just to be like, well, this one thing, this one thing. I, I don't know. And like I said, in November, you got five people up for voting or for election, so please, people, take your petition out and run for office.
Yes. Please do.
Okay. No further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Jennings?
Hell no.
Mr. Ecker?
Yes.
Ms. Jennings? Come on, Rick. Ms. Jennings?
Yes.
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Absolutely not.
Tommy?
Yeah.
Adding a motherfucking mind, you idiots.
That's right.
That's okay. The dumbest thing this city's done for something gay, you've been doing great.
Good riddance, you can go with gay. Guys, calm down, calm down, calm down, please, please, please. Right, so I did. Good. Blair.
I make a motion to adjourn.
In the nine months since she's been here, that we're done in the four years before. She's done. The stuff she handed you today, did you fill out that application?
No, I would love her to have to say do that.
I made a motion to adjourn. Who's.
Second.
I hope we see all of you five council members at City Hall tomorrow running it.
Piss off, it won't be you.
Yes, and it's.